Good evening, Canby. I am calling to order the Canby City Council meeting for January 19th. And we have some citizen input. Melissa, I have two people listed here. Do we have more than that?
We just had the two.
And we have a way to get Mr. Sampson in, plugged into us? Okay, I see him on the screen. So first on for citizen input is Patrick Sampson.
Thank you, council members. Appreciate your time here. I'm representing the Oregon Youth Soccer Association, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and that operates as a governing body of amateur recreational and competitive youth soccer in the state of Oregon. And in tandem, the OISA Foundation, the governing body's foundation arm, is additionally and exclusively focused on promoting equity and inclusion for all of Oregon's youth, and continually striving to create opportunities for communities to grow and strengthen together through the game of soccer. The OISA Foundation, which has The OISA Foundation, which has community leaders in Canby on its board, has been empowered to seek out a new and permanent space for OISA's ecosystem to call home. The foundation has identified the Canby community as an ideal geographical location and civic partner. So the home that's currently envisioned for this permanent space includes an idea for multiple sports fields that serves Canby and other immediate surrounding cities, statewide participants, and regional and national youth sports traveling teams. OISA's reach in soccer is strong because of its operating position as a state governing body, and as such provides a unique opportunity to bring consistent and meaningful economic impact to the city as a central hub from and outside the region. Other local youth sports partners would be encouraged to replicate the same. But beyond sports, OISA understands the importance to the city that the facility be accessible to members and serve a diverse set of needs for recreation and entertainment that is attractive to a full spectrum of Canby's resident demographics. This most notably would be an idea for an amphitheater as part of the complex for community events and walking trails around and throughout the city. OISA Foundation desires to take the lead on forming and operating a campaign to build and manage a facility in the city of Canby while also partnering with other sports groups to meet the operational needs in the area. But this also includes covering the expenses for council to manage the campaign, and taking the lead on generating the necessary funds to build the facility, and committing to managing it in partnership with the city in whichever way it envisions. We're in the process of meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and many other community groups to better understand the needs of and the desire from the community for athletic fields, youth sports facilities, and a comprehensive community resource for recreation and entertainment. This includes a strong intention to continue to meet with diverse groups from an equitable approach to shape out the beginning stages of the vision and how it could best meet the needs of all stakeholders in the city. So far, every group we've met with has had an ecstatic reaction to the idea. So we invite anyone interested in having a conversation with us to be in touch with me directly. My email address is P S at C O G E O dot U S, and please reach out anytime. Thank you, and we look forward to continuing to deepen our relationship with the city of Canby, its representatives, and its citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Could you repeat your email address, please?
Sure, it is P S, as in postscript, P S at C O G E O dot U S.
Thank you, and thank you for your time tonight coming to us. Mr. Patton, are you on?
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Hello, Mr. Patton. We can hear you.
Excellent. So tonight I'm following up on something that was presented to the council quite a few months ago regarding the Clackamas County making an offer to the city to take over many of the county roads that are actually squarely in the city, such as parts of Redwood Street, Maple, and Pine. I have not heard any sort of update as to whether that agreement has been signed off on and that has been solidified. It's been some time, so I would assume and hope that it has. I was hoping to get an update as to whether it has happened, and if it hasn't, why? And when that will happen, based on, you know, these offers do not come along quite very often from the county, and they were offering more money than what the city has ever been offered in the past, and I would hate for the city to miss out on this opportunity. So I was hoping to get an update on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patton. Normally with citizen input, we just have you input, and we take it into consideration for future. But I'm wondering, Scott, is Jerry there, or do you have an update that can be provided at this point in juncture? I'll get you both. Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, Jerry Nelson, Public Works Director, is here, and Scott Archer, City Administrator. Yeah, we've completed the transfer of those county roads to the city. I think we reported that to the council, and we've discussed it on numerous occasions, and those have all been transferred to our jurisdiction and our ownership. And in fact, with that came some funding that allowed us to supplement our improvement of some of those roadways. And Mr. Nelson might just quickly talk about which ones have already been worked on or are in the works.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thanks, Jason, for bringing this up. All of that went good. We got a great deal with Clackamas County. Transfers are complete, and we also were able to finish in this last year's paving schedule, South Redwood. So I don't know if you've been over there to look at that. It turned out, it turned out amazing. They did a great job. So, yeah, we're moving ahead on that, and hopefully we can take some of that funding in the next year's paving schedule and keep tackling them roads.
Jerry, are all of the county roads now in the city, or is it just a particular list that we have transferred so far?
We just took a particular list of stuff that was manageable, and Mike Besner is with Clackamas County, has reached out to Scott and I, and we're gonna see what, if they have anything else to offer us in the future.
Very good. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, those are the only two items for citizen input we have so far, so we're moving down the agenda to the consent agenda.
Yes, Council President, I move, let me read it here. I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the November 17th, 2021 joint work session of the Planning Commission and City Council and the regular City Council meeting.
All right, and I see it's been moved by Counselor Varwig and seconded by Counselor Spoon to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the November 17th, 2021 joint work session of the Planning Commission and City Council and regular City Council meeting minutes. Do I, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. Moving into resolutions and ordinances. First, we have a motion, we have a resolution to consider, Resolution Number 1361. Scott or Melissa? Looks like we have Scott at the table. Are you going to take this one?
Yes. Thank you, Council President Hensley and members of the City Council. This, this resolution is a budget action that is related to some internal reorganization within the Public Works Department, and more specifically within our sewer fund. We are essentially swapping one currently vacant position in our sewer collections division, moving that over to the wastewater treatment plant division. It's related, this position is currently vacant. It's a little bit of, a little bit of kind of shuffling. There's been some movement with the last year's promotion of Mr. Nelson into the Public Works Director. Then we moved another staff member up into the supervisory lead role, and there's been kind of this musical chairs, if you will, but we've got this one vacancy left, and we looked at how best to utilize that within the Public Works Division, and we're doing a little bit of kind of moving around. So it's all under the umbrella of Public Works, but we're removing this vacancy into our storm, into a position that will help our storm sewer compliance, our regulatory issues, and it will be under the, under the, the division of the wastewater treatment plant. So what we're asking you to do is simply approve a resolution that makes our budgeting of this process very transparent, and we wanted to take an abundance of caution to make sure that we are in compliance with Oregon budget law. Our new Finance Director, Mr. Kaitola, has recommended that we do this resolution with you just out of an abundance of transparency so that we're, we're fully in compliance with Oregon budget law. So this isn't, we're not doing a supplemental budget or anything like that. We're not asking for any additional funds. It's all within our, within our sewer budget, our public works budget. There is a part of, part of this movement of some of this money internally is a $25,000, pulling $25,000 out of our sewer fund contingency to fully fund the position for the remainder of the current budget year, and then we'll account for all of this going forward in next year's budget year. So again, just asking for your approval of a resolution that makes all of this very clear in our, in our budget, and our budget will be fully compliant if we do it this way. Happy to answer any questions, and as we just had Mr. Nelson up here, he's also available to help answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Anybody on the council have a question of Scott or Jerry at this time? Counselor Banks?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution 1361, transferring appropriation authority from the sewer collections to sewer wastewater expenditures.
And I have a second. So it has been moved by Counselor Banks and seconded by Counselor Varwig to adopt Resolution 1361, a resolution transferring appropriation authority from sewer collections to sewer water expenditures. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? I see six hands. It passes 6-0. Thank you, Scott. Down the agenda to ordinance number 1567, and you're still at the table, so I'm assuming you've got this one, too.
I'm actually going to call on Todd Wood, our City of Canby Transit Director, and he will give you a report on what this item is about. I think you'll find it to be a positive agreement that we're asking you to move forward on. Mr. Wood?
Thank you.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Todd Wood, the Transit Director for Canby Area Transit. So I'm here today to talk about an IGA with ODOT, and since we have quite a few new counselors, and this is a bit old, let me give everybody some background. Canby Area Transit has only, I think, two actual shelters in our entire bus system, and they're here at the transit center. And my predecessor, Julie Whaling, had wanted to begin to expand that and add more shelters. Shelters and the expansion are fairly expensive. We have 47 stops. We'd eventually like to put shelters in. And so she found out about the 99E paving project, the repaving project, and she got to, together with ODOT, and was able to get a grant that allowed her to work with ODOT and have them do the prep work for the shelters for at least six of the shelters in their service area. So what we're looking to do is install 10 shelters from territorial all the way to Burke Parkway. Of those 10 shelters, the city will do four of them, and ODOT will do the other six. Now, when I say ODOT will do the other six, they will do all the prep work. We'll actually do the installation of the shelters ourselves. I included in your packet a whole bunch of information. Most of this is just, just for you to look at if you're interested. It includes the stops, estimated costs, and the shelters we're looking at installing. So the IGA that we're looking to approve tonight is just the agreement with ODOT that they will do the improvement work and that we will reimburse them for the improvement work. Most of the reimbursement that we will give ODOT will come from grants from ODOT, and so we'll reimburse them for that work. It saves us a ton of money. If we were to do this ourselves, we'd be in the million-dollar range or more, and we can do this whole project right now for about $375,000. When it's done, that figure may change a little bit depending on how much everything costs. But all the IGA says is that they'll do the work. We'll reimburse them the money to do the improvements for the stops, which includes acquiring the necessary right-of-ways that they need to, putting in the proper ADA equipment, and putting in the structures needed to bolt down our shelters. And then we will go in afterwards and put them down, and then the rest of the IGA says that we will maintain them. So we'll clean them, replace them, fix them, and keep the areas up. So that's, that's basically what this entails.
Well, thank you, Todd. So what exactly, I know we have our packet, but not everybody is privy to seeing that or has access to seeing it. So could you explain what, what is the prep work that they would do? And what do we, what would we be expected to reimburse them for?
So what the prep work will require is they will have to go in, most of our, most of our stops are located on corners or close to corners. And so they will need to redo the sidewalks. They'll need to expand the sidewalks out for the shelter because we need to have a certain amount of length between the shelter and the sidewalk for mobility devices. Any, any shelter that would land near a corner needs to have a proper ADA ramp so that they can, so people can embark and get down properly. Any signaling changes that need to be done, they would have to take care of as well. Right-of-ways, there's a few right-of-ways with the railroad that they need to acquire because some of, some of our shelters need to go out into that, that area. And so they'll make sure that the plot, the, what they pour is big enough for the shelters themselves, and any other improvements to the grading that needs to be done. If they need to do anything for the buses to pull over safely, they'll do that as well. So then, when all that said and done, we'll reimburse them whatever additional costs is on top of the $167,000 that this initially authorizes. And then we will go in afterwards. Jerry's team is gonna go in, and they'll set the shelters and bolt them in place as well as the benches. So.
All right, and I assume since this is ODOT agreement, these stops would be only on 99E?
Correct, yes.
Counselor Varwig?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Todd, for this. I'm a huge fan of this project. My dad rode the bus to work every day when I was a kid, and so that my mom could have the car. I remember plenty of times when he stood at bus stops in the rain waiting for a bus and was drenched by the time he got to work. So I'm a huge fan of getting these shelters at bus stops. My question comes, and I know this is just the IGA between, you know, the work with ODOT, but I'm looking at the bid that came in for the shelters themselves and then the budgets on each one. And I'm seeing about a $2,000 price difference where it talks about shelter structure. So just wondering if you could clarify for me, is this budget is just a guesstimate and can change once we get to completion on the project? Is that correct?
The budget is a guesstimate that could change. Right now, I've got a total guesstimate of about $375,000, including the, the grant itself plus, plus the shelters. Once ODOT's done, then we'll find out what the actual cost is. The shelters themselves will get an updated quote here shortly, and then I'll come back to the council to actually order the shelters themselves. But yes, it is, it is, this project, I think, doesn't even start until summer. And when they're ready to put in the shelters is up for grabs. So things, things can move.
Is there a possibility of purchasing the shelters sooner than later and storing them somewhere? I don't know if there's a huge cost associated with that to make sure that we maintain the good price that we're seeing so far on the shelters.
It's possible. I haven't ordered them yet, and the reason I haven't ordered them is the storage piece is a problem. It might be better now that Cub is out. We might be able to find some space. But that's nine shelters. It's a lot of space. You don't want to.
They're big.
Yeah. You don't want to keep them outside because they get nasty. They're also very heavy. So wherever you put them, they should sit and not move, and they're glass. So anything that, you have to put them in a place where you're not going to be working around them too much, or they break. So it's one of those things that I've sort of put off on until, until I have more time because, or less time between the projects. Otherwise, I'm afraid they'll get damaged.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I know, obviously, costs are increasing across many different industries, mine included. So obviously wanting to, you know, get the best deal we can on all of those shelters, but I understand that storage piece as well. So I appreciate the clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Varwig. I do have to ask, though, Todd, if these are shelters that are going to be outside all of the time, what is the issue with storing them outside?
It's just when you have them all together like that, where, where they're going to be put, they're going to be put in a place where they're supposed to be, and then we'll maintain them and clean them. I don't have a nice, clean place for them. I have, I have a dirty field where I'm at, or we have the shop. And at the time, originally, you know, Cub was still there, and there's a lot of, a lot of trucks, a lot of movement, a lot of gravel. So I didn't, I may, I may now, we may be able to work with the shop and say, is there a place to put these out there? But I didn't have any storage space, so I didn't. didn't have any place to put them.
Okay. Counselor Spoon?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a huge fan of this project. We've been talking with Julie about this for a long time, getting some dignity in waiting for the bus and not doing so in the rain. So I'm really happy it's happening. What would be the timeline on expanding in the future to cover more spaces?
It's, it depends. None of the others are inside the city limits. So we would have to get permission from the cities that they are in or ODOT if it's not in a city. For instance, we'd have to go to Aurora and get permission to put them in there and then we'd have to work out a budget there. There's, there's a lot of, because a lot of our stops along the way are not in great locations, there's a lot of flat work that has to go into that in order to make them, the shelters themselves A properly ADA accessible. And so it gets more costly. This is an ample or a great opportunity to use an already existing project to bring the cost down. So a lot of it will be money and then speaking with the various cities. The, the way we would want to go about this is what, and the reason we picked specifically these 10 stops is these are the most used stops in the system. So that, that would be, once we get these in and done, then the next analysis are what are the next most used stops in the system?
Sure.
And then we go after those. And then, and then after those, then we go after the next ones and so on.
Great. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion then. I move we approve ordinance 1567 and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into agreement number 34634 with ODOT for 99E bus stop improvements in the city of Canby.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Spoon and seconded by Counselor Banks to pass ordinance 1567, ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into agreement number 34634 with ODOT for 99E bus stop improvements in the city of Canby, coming to a second reading for February 2nd, 2022. All those in favor? I see six hands. That passes six zero.
Thank you.
Okay. I need Scott and potentially Jerry. We're going to discuss new business. The first item of discussion is regarding tree removals.
Yes, hello again. This, this item is, was put on the agenda to, intended to be an informational update for you counselors and also perhaps some, some discussion and feedback before we bring some action items back to you. So we have Jerry Nelsin, Public Works Director, and Jeff Snyder, our Parks Maintenance Lead here. I'll have them come up and jump in the, the hot seat here in just a second. Just kind of a quick overview before they come up and give you some further details. So this is all related to the loss of trees in our devastating ice storm that we had last year, almost a year ago, coming up in February. We, we had a significant amount of damage in our trees, particularly in, in our parks. A number of those require some type of either cleanup or in, you know, what we really want to talk about is, is the removal process for a number of these that have been identified. We, we worked with arborists. We ended up basically determining that this scope of the, the damage that was done with the trees was beyond what the city was able to manage in sort of a financial and scoping process. And we ended up working with FEMA through, through our, kind of our local process and up, up through the, the federal government with FEMA for the potential to have some assistance with this process. And they, they were contacted last year. It was a, kind of a lengthy process to go through everything, but it's resulted in some good, some good potential for us to work together. And there are some timing things that we'll be talking about, but really what we wanted to do was, I wanted to ask Jerry and Jeff to give you just sort of a walkthrough on this with the understanding that, you know, anytime you take out trees in, you know, particularly in parks and areas that people love to utilize the, the shade and the protection and, and everything that trees do, there's sensitivity around that. We understand that and we're, we're being very thoughtful and taking a, you know, just a, I think a kind of an elongated approach to this process. And we're at that point now where we're going to start talking about removing these trees. This, this conversation tonight with you is, is to inform you and then also to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. What we're intending to do, unless you have any different thoughts or direction tonight, is we've done the bidding process for the tree work and we're planning to bring that back to you under our, our bidding contracting ordinance at the next council meeting. So we would be bringing back the contract and move forward. So this is a, again, given the sensitive nature of this, we wanted to have this conversation with you tonight before we bring that to you and present it. We also, I want to acknowledge, and, and I think Jerry and Jeff can talk about this little bit, but because of some timing issues with regard to when the FEMA money will expire and when it needs to be utilized, I think we're going to ask you for an emergency adoption of the ordinance. I know we try to hold that back and only utilize that when it really is an emergency. And I think given the, the nature of when these funds will expire and kind of where we're at, we may need to ask you to enact that clause. But I'll, I'll let Jerry and Jeff talk about that a bit further. So, so what I want to do is have them come up and I think we even maybe have some pictures to show you of some of the damage, just to give you a little bit more of the, the scope of this and then have them answer any questions that you might have and then, and then we'll kind of go forward from there.
Hi again, everyone.
Hi, Jerry.
Yeah. So appreciate you guys letting us bring this ahead. We know it's a, can be a sensitive conversation on the trees. This all started off with the ice storm as we know, and we, Jeff and his team was able to alleviate or eliminate a lot of the hazards so that we could keep our parks open. But there still is a lot of stuff that hasn't been sorted out yet. Want to thank Melissa and Rhonda, Roselle and Jeff. We were able to get together with FEMA and they, we were able to get 220,000 roughly back for the storm cleanup, the stuff that they've done and a little over 30,000 of stuff, of cleanup that Jeff and his team did in our parks. Now, the, the stuff that's left, the, the damaged trees that are left, I'll let Jeff get into the details of all that because he has all that information. But basically with arborist reports, it's, and, and information that we've been provided that FEMA has let us know that they will fully reimburse us for all of, all of the damaged trees that are left behind if we, if we follow their process and our, our process of bidding and all of that. So that being said, we filed for a five month extension to get this done. So we had until May 1st to make this happen. So I'll let Jeff go into the different parts and the trees and the amount of trees and stuff with the details.
Mayor, or I guess no mayor, council. We have four trees at Legacy Park that we'd like to have removed. One tree from the Swim, Swim Center, 12 trees from Weight Park, four trees from Community Park and eight trees from the Canby Adult Center. The, we hired a contractor to originally assess the damage that we had. We picked up, identified 36 trees. FEMA agreed with us on 30 of them. So after that point, and we had direction from FEMA on what, you know, what was applicable and what could be removed, we got the, did the bidding process and we're kind of ready to go with this if it be your will.
Thanks, Jeff. How many was that at Community and the Adult Center? You're faster than I could write.
Sorry. Eight trees at the Canby Adult Center, four trees at Community Park, one tree at the Swim Center and four trees from Legacy Park.
And 12 at Weight.
Correct.
Okay. That's the one that's going to hurt the most in my opinion, but we'll see what others have to say. First, I do have hands up. So first we go with Counselor Banks. He's first on my screen. Counselor Banks, did you have a question?
Sorry, I was, I was muted. But the trees at the Adult Center and the Swim Center, are those deciduous trees?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Um, thank you. The trees at the Adult Center, aren't those school district trees?
Good question, Counselor Parker.
Historically, we've always maintained all the trees on site even. And I did run, I did run this by the school district and I can't come up with the guy's name right now. Was not expecting this question, but I ran it by them first.
That's okay. You don't, Jeff, you don't need, don't need the name. I just, I figured you'd check off this box. I just, we're trying to maintain good relationship with the school district and I don't want them being surprised that we're cutting down their trees. You remember, we're a policymaking body and our policy is to have safe parks and let you guys do the management. I'm running into the same situation. I'm on a board of directors at a property at the coast where we have had the exact same thing happen and we're having to have a tree removal. And of course, it's causing a lot of heartburn. But if you've got a professional arborist coming in and telling us this has to be done, and even better, if you're able to find the, the funds to do it, let's get this done. We'll try and, we'll, we trust you to remediate what it looks like afterwards and replace the trees and that sort of thing. But for me, you've got my support to go out and do what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Spoon, your hand was up, then it was down. Did you mean to lower it? Did you have a question?
Yeah, Greg asked the question I was going to ask anyway, which was about making sure that the school board was on the same page with us about us taking the Swim Center and the Adult Center tree down. But I, you know, I really appreciate you guys' hard work on this. It's, it's going to be unpleasant. I mean, our community's very attached to the trees specifically at Weight Park. That's going to hurt a little bit, but our priority has to be safety. And so is the plan then to replace them or do we have a vision for that after removal?
Thank you, Counselor Spoon. Good question. Jeff, Jerry?
That is a good question. Go ahead. At, at this point, I believe we have like roughly 41 trees in that park right now. By removing the 12, probably about six of them are just stubbed right now anyways. So we're not going to have a great loss. There's some iconic ones. I probably used the wrong word there. There's some big broken down ones along Third. Those will be missed just because of their, you know, big physical beauty that they had. But we will probably have to put them back in a different location and we'll probably put a different variety and maybe more columnar so they don't go out over the street as much. But yes, we can put more trees back in.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm sure that we all, well, Counselor Parker and I are probably the only ones that were on the council at the time of the removal of the trees on First Avenue. And the, the outcry from the public was, it was heartbreaking because those were iconic trees is, is to use Jeff's word. And yeah, our community does adore the look that those trees give us. So this is going to hurt. And so any remediation that can be done would be great. So thank you for that, Jeff. I have some more hands on deck here. Counselor Bajoran?
Thank you, Council President Hensley. So there was an interesting question raised last night of the Parks and Rec Master Plan Review that I thought I ought to touch on here. And it kind of goes into the idea that, you know, this is going to cause some heartache removing some iconic trees in, you know, parks that people have known for a very, very long time. The idea of chipping those trees as opposed to incinerating them. What, what is the actual plan for disposal of those trees? And is that something that FEMA would allow as far as that process is concerned?
Yeah, this particular process dealing with FEMA and since they kind of hold the purse strings, we have to take these, this wood all to a waste facility. It has to be documented and no profit can be made off of it. And it's probably not a real big ask of them since they're, you know, flipping the bill for this. They just don't want anyone making money off of a catastrophe, I guess.
So yeah, the, the limbs would be chipped and disposed of at a recycling center that FEMA approves. And the larger pieces of debris would go to a facility similar to that and probably most likely be recycled.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Jeff, would you consider running this by the Parks Committee with a map of which trees are coming out? And especially with Weight Park, I'd like their, them to weigh in on, on possible reconfigurations of Weight Park if we want to do anything different with it. But it, it would be great to have some citizen input on this so you don't have to carry the weight yourself.
Yeah, Counselor Parker, that's, Jeff and I have already brought this forward to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They're really on board. And Scott was just bringing up in our master plan meeting we had today with staff, there's actually a recommendation that's going to be coming out on that to look at a master plan for Weight Park. So we're feeling like we're really ahead of the game on this, other than the, what we're all going to go through when we do start removing these trees.
I'm always glad to suggest things that are already happening. So thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. And thanks again to the Public Works and Parks teams for chipping all the debris that happened during the ice storm in the first place. I realize that this project is, is kind of still attached to that storm. And unfortunately, Community of Canby, these, these trees will need to come down for the safety purposes. And as much as we all love them, just like we loved the ones on First Avenue, we really don't have a choice because we don't want something to happen to a citizen in our parks. Any other questions from council to staff? Seeing none. Thank you, Jeff and Jerry. Are we needing some, is this going to come to us, Scott, is this going to come to us in the form of a resolution later? Or do we need a decision point at this time?
No decisions tonight. Again, just, this was just to give you the opportunity to be aware of this that was coming to you at the next meeting. So you'll have a decision and an ask at the next meeting, which is just going to be the contrast to go ahead with the removal. But we just thought this was of the level of importance that you, you would want to be aware of this before we just simply threw a contract in front of you for approval. And yeah, I appreciate the conversation and the understanding. And we, we do realize that, that this is a tough one to bring, bring some of these beautiful trees down, but they're, we're doing this for safety and liability reasons. And it, it's just as simple as that. We just can't, we can't leave a known hazard up that might hurt somebody. So that's it on that. That was just informational and to get to court.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And thank you to Jerry and Jeff. Next on the agenda is also an item of new business. It says, discussion regarding Oregon Department of Transportation tolling program. Scott, do you have anything on this or just my notes from the mayor are we talking about?
I think the notes probably from the mayor since he had to step out. He, yeah, Mayor Hudson actually wanted to speak to this tonight, I know. And I, I can, I can kind of help fill in a little bit if you've got some of the notes on that, Council President.
I had a brief conversation with him earlier this evening in light of the fact that we, we had a hunch that this could happen, given his working situation right now. So what he's asking colleagues is he wants us to direct staff to draft a letter to ODOT and the OTC opposing tolling, which we realize is probably coming. But if it is in fact going to be implemented, we, he would like to see that the diversion traffic be mitigated prior to the implementation of tolling. So we just, a letter of, of, well, we want to oppose tolling, but I, I think that's going to happen to be honest, myself. But we would like to have them address the, the situation that could really- myself. But we would like to have them address the situation that could really impact our community on 99E with the diversion traffic, and we want them to address that prior to the implementation of tolling. So, that's up for discussion, and then we will go by consensus on whether we want to have staff draft that letter and bring it back to us for signatures at the next meeting. First hand up, I see Counselor Banks.
Didn't we discuss inviting somebody from ODOT or from the Oregon Transportation Commission to come and discuss this issue with us?
I believe that was brought up, but I'm not sure if we were able to reach them. Scott, do you know?
Yeah, it's on our, it's on our growing list of items for potential future council item. We haven't officially reached out. I think we were waiting for a little more, a little more discussion on what specifically the council might wanna do. But yeah, we're ready to reach out to them and ask for an updated report whenever you're ready to do that. I think it's just a matter of slotting it into an agenda.
Okay. I would think that a soon agenda would be good, especially if we're wanting to draft this letter. I know that Chair Smith from County Commission has drafted a letter that many of our regional leaders have signed on to, that's already gone to ODOT and OTC. So, I'm thinking that sooner rather than later on the drafting of this letter and a presentation from them would be in order. Counselor Banks, you still have your hand up? Did you have another question? Or did you just?
I wasn't, I wasn't done. I wanted to clarify if we were inviting them in. I think it's important for us to get the information before we decide to draft a letter. I don't stand in support of tolling, but it does seem like we're getting the horse ahead of the cart if we have not heard from them yet. I would also express hesitance to having staff draft a letter that is essentially political. I think that should be drafted by us and let staff keep its hands cleans from politics.
I'm not sure I view it as political necessarily. We're just looking out for our community, and that's what we're elected to do. We realize that there is going to be diversion traffic. So, we just want to have that situation looked at. And honestly, Counselor Banks, having them draft it, it's just, they're in the weeds right now. They can bring us the language. We can tweak it or deny it as it goes. So, I'm okay with the mayor's idea of having them draft something, having Joe draft something and bring it to us. That way, it's all got the legalese in there for us. I appreciate that effort for them. So, having them bring us language and us weigh in on it is a good place to start. Counselor Bajoran, your hand is next on my screen.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I agree with Counselor Banks to a degree. I mean, I think the possibility of a letter like that being political is something we do have to consider. And the reason I think that is because if you throw it out in the gauntlet without having proper information, proper input from, you know, from ODOT, you know, you risk that turning into, for lack of a better word, a firefight. So, I'd rather not see that if I can help it. I'd like to see as much information from ODOT as possible before we draft up any letter, just so that we have all of our options and information on the table.
Counselor Spoon?
Thank you. Yeah, it's been probably about two years since ODOT has come and talked to us, and I think it would be prudent for us to ask questions of them and get, I mean, I'm certainly not a fan of tolling, but I also haven't had a conversation with them about what mitigation efforts would be in place and what that looks like and what their plan for a region is. When we last talked to them, they hadn't even been to Cambie yet. I recall a specific conversation where they said, "Well, people will just take other routes in and out of town." And I said, "What other routes in and out of town?" So, I think, you know, my preference is always to get information before sending an opinion. So, I would like to see it happen very quickly. I suspect that I will be happy to send that letter, but I think it would be irresponsible since we haven't even talked to ODOT in two years, and we haven't gotten consistent messaging from, from anyone here on council that has been attending the tolling meetings. So, my preference would be information first, opinion second.
Counselor Parker?
Yeah, I'm gonna quote the mayor, who always advises me to seek to understand before I have other people understand me. I don't know how many cars would come through. I don't know what plans they have for mitigation. I don't know any of these things, so for me to say, "I don't want you to do something because I'm making assumptions that it's gonna be bad", doesn't seem to be a responsible behavior on my part. And now, let me go off on a rant about ODOT. They've got smart, strategic people. I don't understand how they screwed this up so badly by not starting the process of saying to people, "Do you want improvements in your road system? Do you want improvements on 205? How would you like those improvements to look? When would you like them? How much do you want them to cost?", and then get to the revenue part. But to jump to the worst part of that spectrum of saying, "How would you like us to do something that's very inconvenient?", just seems like they weren't paying attention. But, that's that. Back to my point, I don't wanna sign the letter until we bring a person from ODOT and get some of the metrics. I am assuming they have some diversion information. I'd like to see it. I'm assuming that they have some remediation. I'd like to know that. I don't wanna just be knee-jerk saying, "We don't like this."
Okay. So, I realize this is a big ask, Scott, 'cause the wheels of bureaucracy move very slowly. But how soon can we get on the phone to ODOT and maybe get them to a meeting sooner rather than later? I mean, ideally, I'd like them at our next meeting. I don't know if that's possible with their schedule, but what can you do for us there?
Yeah, I'll make the ask. I'll make it tomorrow. And I can't speak for them as to can they make the next meeting, but I'll certainly ask if they can do that. They were here before you, a few meetings ago, somewhat recently, asking for a noise ordinance variance on the forthcoming 99 project. And at that meeting, there were several representatives on the Zoom, and they did kind of allude to that, "Hey, we'd be happy to come back and, you know, make ourselves available." So, I think they're open to that. I know they're doing a lot of outreach on this, on this tolling topic, and I think it's something that is a priority for them, and they have a, I think they have some key people that, you know, are going out and doing outreach. So, again, can't speak for them directly, but just what I've heard and some of the things that they've even said on our meetings, and I'll make the ask immediately and ask that they get to the very next meeting that they're able to do. And I'll give them kind of the highlights of what you're hoping they'll bring to you to discuss.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. Because I agree that this letter is a good idea, but I'm feeling that they, my colleagues on the board need some more information. So, I want to make sure that they are delivered that information ASAP. Okay. Any other questions regarding this topic? Are we good with just sending him forth with making an ODOT request? I'm seeing heads nod. Okay. Going into mayor's business, the mayor's business was actually the last item of business on the new business, part of the agenda. So, we'll move on to council comments and liaison reports. And I will begin and then go around my screen. Traffic Safety Commission is working on, still working on, I should say, the parking issues on South Second and Third. There's actually a subcommittee divided into, of people that have time to go and do field trips and things. So, they are working on it. We have a meeting, a Zoom meeting on the 24th regarding this issue. So, they're really working with the neighbors there in that area, trying to come to some solution for the parking issues there in that neighborhood. They want to send a letter to ODOT, and just, hear me out. They wanna send a letter to ODOT with some recommendations for right turn only, turning signage from certain areas onto 99E. And in the last meeting, Officer Makeham even noted that those signs used to be in place, but over the years and several construction projects later, they've kind of gone away and not been replaced. So, they're convening and coming up with a list of the areas that those right turn only signage should go back into place. And I suggested that they just send that list to Scott Archer and have him draft the letter to go to ODOT. Because anytime you wanna make some kind of a change that goes to 99E, you have to have their blessing. And then also, they're working on, they have, historically, as you know, they've done PSA videos. They're wanting to do some articles to like the Herald about traffic safety tips and such. So, what I'm bringing before you is kind of a consensus thing, but actually, I've talked to the mayor today, and he thinks we should codify it in the form of a resolution. So, Joe, if you're hearing me over there, we talked earlier on the phone, but the mayor does think that we should have this codified in the form of a resolution. My feeling is that we have active committees, which is awesome. I'm so happy about that. But we need to have some continuity, some consistency in how they perform their duties. And if they wanna do articles to the paper, if they wanna do social media stuff, you know, safety tips for traffic safety is a great idea. But if they're gonna be wanting to represent the city, it needs to be through the council liaison to that committee and the staff liaison to that committee, so that the staff, you know, representatives of the city have eyes on it, so that they're not just going willy-nilly out there on social media on their own. I think we can all agree that we would like to have that. So, my proposition here is, my proposal is that we just make a constant policy for all of the committees, that if they want to go to the public with something, that it goes through the council liaison and staff liaison. And then, we should probably, as the mayor suggested, I agree, we should codify that in the form of a resolution so that it's in black and white, so to speak. Thoughts? I see Counselor Spoon.
Yeah, codify it fine. At the very least, I think that as we head into our retreat in a few weeks, the boards and committees and commissions and the liaisons and all of that will probably be part of the conversation. At the very least, if not codified, I would think that maybe some sort of like handbook or guidebook or best practices or code of conduct for our boards and committees might be an appropriate place to put that as well, that would indicate what are, what council's expectations are, what is off limits, what is the appropriate venue for all things, where someone might represent the city beyond just communications. I mean, we also can't have board members setting up meetings with outside agencies without involving staff, you know what I mean, and speaking on behalf of the city. So, there's actually like a whole series of conduct and behaviors that I think could be addressed. In this case, I would think that, you know, I think all communication should come from the city for consistency in messaging and branding and all those things we've talked about. I have no problem with a committee wanting a message to go out, but I agree it should go through. The liaison and city staff should be the person drafting the information, so that there's consistency in communication as well, so that people should be able to tell that something came from the city. Yeah, but if not codified, I think we're getting to the point where we probably need a code of conduct for our committee members and volunteer members of boards and commissions, and that would, at the very least, be an appropriate place for that.
Yeah, I agree. That's a good discussion for the goal-setting session. I refuse to call it a retreat, and I'll discuss that later. But, so you're right, and I agree. So, thank you. That's exactly what I was thinking. If you're going to be going to the public representing the city, it should actually come through the city, so we have consistency in messaging and branding, like you said. Counselor Banks?
Yeah, I agree that we should discuss that at our goal-setting session. In the meantime, I had a question about the process of putting in new signs. I don't remember right turn only signs going on to 99, but I've only lived here 21 years and grew up nearby. But, like, who approves that? Who would approve such a change?
ODOT. But apparently, and our police department has agreed, apparently, that some signage did already exist that doesn't now because of a series of events in years. We're talking like things that make sense. For example, the car washer 7-Eleven, where it's right near a very busy intersection, it causes problems. IV and I-99 has a lot of accidents at that intersection. So, they're just trying to mitigate for safety reasons. So, they're gonna compile a list and send it to Scott, as I suggested, as their liaison, that they just send a list to Scott, and then he can discern whether or not that he thinks that that should go to ODOT. But ODOT would have to agree, because we're going from a city street onto their highway.
So, that would be different from the description you gave. A city street versus a private business? I'm not sure if we're talking about both?
We're talking about both. We are.
Okay.
I think ODOT has to be involved in the conversation in either case. And so, basically, the Traffic Safety Commission is just gonna compile a list of areas they feel are an issue and give it to me or to Scott directly, but maybe to Scott through me. I'm not sure which way it's gonna go yet. We'll discuss it again at the next meeting, but the list will just, it'll go to Scott, and then it will be discussed as to whether or not it goes to ODOT or comes to us.
So, we don't know if it comes to the city council or not?
Scott, I don't know that it needs to come to us. This is your, you're the day-to-day. So, our committee brings you a list of issues that they feel need to be addressed. Do you need to address all of them through us, or is this kind of fall in your purview?
Yeah, I think it does. I think the reason for the conversation tonight was, Council President Hensley was inquiring about this, and actually, I think Mr. Lindsay and I were, and Council President Hensley, were having a recent discussion about this, and we just suggested that this be brought to you for kind of this general conversation of, you know, awareness, because it is, in essence, it's directing staff, and so the council as a body would be, you know, directing or not, and understanding that this is asking for some staff time. But I think the particulars of the process and working through it are a staff item.
Thank you.
Joe's got something here for you.
And this, I think the greater discussion was if, and you guys have kinda nailed it on the head, if there was messaging involved, that was another piece of it too, because the same committee was trying to both do something that was more structurally, you know, organizationally, staff-oriented work. And then they were also trying to come up with their own messaging and go right to the press with it. So, I think the notion is, we do have communications people. We even said, say, PIOs to special training to know exactly what you should and shouldn't say. And then, of course, we don't wanna make any sort of admissions if they're speaking on our behalf, and suddenly, we find out through the press that we have admitted that there's a dangerous street out there or something like that. So, it was really one of those things where we wanted to get some guidance from you guys, because you are the policymakers. And so, that's why we have this kind of greater, more robust discussion. When things are just about which curb gets painted, it might not come to you every time, but if it's 99E and it seems to have another jurisdiction involved, maybe that's a bigger question, and it's more political, and then therefore, the politicos get to have their involvement as well, if that helps.
Yeah, and I think that, just to add on, thank you, Joe. That's a great reminder. And then that it is one of your, the Traffic Safety Committee is one of your committees, right? So, they advise to the council, not to staff. And so, we were wanting to ensure that that chain of command or that protocol was coming back through the council, not directly to staff from a committee, if you will.
Right. And my suggestion to them was to go through the council liaison and the staff liaison. And my greater thought was, that should probably be the theme for all of the committees, that if they want to go to the public with something, it should go through the council liaison and the staff liaison, so that it is actually representative of the city. and the staff liaison so that it is actually representative of the city. And Joe can have eyes on it and make sure we're all got our, our bases covered. So, um, do we want, um, Joe to work on something now or a greater conversation about this? Well, we will have a greater conversation about it at the, um, goal-setting session on the eleventh. Um, but do you, I guess, should we have him bring us something, kind of a draft policy so we can work from that as a springboard on the eleventh to save everybody some time? Um, that's what my suggestion would be, to, to bring us some draft policy and then we work on it on the eleventh. Um, Counselor Spim.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with, uh, Joe writing some draft policy, but I think that, you know, I don't, also don't want him to do the same job twice. And if, if the scope of what we're going to ask our boards and committees to do or not do is going to grow, uh, I would think it would be prudent. And maybe Joe has a thought on this too. If, if we have him write a draft now and then we have a conversation in three weeks and he needs to completely rewrite it, I'm not sure that that's the best and highest use of his time. Um, because I think that it may include more things than really just communication. So, uh, I guess I'll leave that up, from my perspective, leave that up to Joe, but I don't have a problem if he waits until we have everything kind of on, that we want it to cover before he does the work.
Here he comes.
I would ask, but I would ask that you go back to traffic and safety and ask them to bring that communication through city staff in the meantime.
I've already.
Okay, great, yeah.
Well, and, and so, yeah, you guys, we know if that's your policy, we're going to operate like that moving forward, but we, if we do want to codify it, we can put out kind of codes of conduct for our, um, our, uh, committee members and, and do make that a part of their trainings. And then, um, the other thing is, it, we can, we can always add on to it, right? So say we start with communications and then we go into the other areas that Counselor Spoon was mentioning, like maybe you don't go out and contact outside agencies without some sort of guidance from above, um, that sort of thing. So a lot of it boils down to, I think, the central idea of communications and, and representations right now. That's what I'm hearing, so maybe I'll try to put together a little bit on that and then we can play add-on if we want.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, Tracy.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, any comments on that before I continue my council comments? Okay, the only other thing I had is the Traffic Safety Commission is also exploring truck routes and what, um, what to do about those and the fact that maybe they're not being adhered to and maybe not actually, um, being broadcast well enough to the agencies that are using our truck routes right now. So that, that's something that's being discussed. Um, letter to ODOT, got that. Okay, so other than that, I just want to give a big thank you to Representative Christine Drazen and Senator Bill Kenner for representing our community for so long and doing so well at that and just au revoir. I will, um, as some people out there in, in TV land might not be aware, but we've been re-districted, so we are no longer, um, going to be in their districts after this legislative session. This is the last that they'll represent us. We are now in House District fifty-one and Senate District twenty-six. So I just wanted to say thank you to Representative Drazen and Senator Kenner for their service and representative, uh, representation of our community thus far. So that's all I have. I'm going around my screen now for council comments and, um, going in, we'll go in, uh, count, clockwise order, Counselor Bajoran.
Thank you, Council President Hensley. Um, nothing to report as of right now. Uh, Canby Utility was supposed to meet on the eleventh, but due to lack of forum, they had to postpone. Uh, they will be meeting tomorrow, uh, so I'll report back in the next, uh, council meeting, uh, anything that's, uh, going on with them.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Farwick.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, on the Planning Commission, welcomed, uh, its three newest commissioners at its last meeting. Um, they also, uh, had the duty of electing a new chair and a new vice chair, so just want to say congratulations to Commissioner Jason Patton, who is the new chair of your Planning Commission, uh, and congratulations to Commissioner James Heeb, who is your new vice chair of the Planning Commission. Um, that beyond, uh, welcoming the three new, uh, members, which also included, uh, Dan Uwer and Joe Judy Girash, uh, they had a very busy meeting with several public hearings, so they got their feet very, very wet at that first meeting. Um, they are going to be having a work session soon to continue working through code for the food carts, so, uh, keep your eyes out for that coming. Um, I don't have a report for CTV. I will have one of those next time. And I'm looking to see, Chief Davis had wanted to give a report for fire, but he is, uh, not on, so we will save that for the next time as well. That will conclude my report.
Thank you, Counselor Farwick. Counselor Banks.
All right, thank you. The, um, the Library Advisory Board met, uh, yesterday, um, and I have a couple of things to report here. The Friends of Library, um, are, are planning on doing that Christmas lights, um, uh, like tour, uh, again, next year. They had, they had a great experience doing it this year. Uh, the monthly proceeds from their book sales have recovered to pre-COVID levels, um, as of December, um, for the first time in a long time. Um, they hit their average from, from before COVID. Um, the Library Advisory Board continues to, um, express frustration that some of our library district funds were shifted to Oregon City fourteen years ago as an effort to, um, help Oregon City's library budget. And so they're still concerned about that and I think I'll be having a, uh, like setting up a discussion with Scott about that, um, soon. The Canby School Board met, um, Monday, uh, last week and, um, yeah, it was Monday last week. Um, and the biggest item discussed was the financial audit, which proved to be, um, somewhat less interesting than the National College Football Championship, I have to admit, um, causing me to lose focus on the audit. Uh, the school district did receive an A in an audit report. There is a massive staffing problem that we still have. Our new hires in the last year are about double normal years, which means our resignations have also been about double. We've also, um, been hammered with attendance through our latest wave of COVID, um, losing about thirty percent of our students. Uh, we have not been losing a huge amount of staff and so we have not shifted to online. Um, everyone's nervously discussing the possibility of us having to go to online, um, like we did. If we did, it would be a temporary, a temporary thing. Um, and, and we wouldn't be staying there for the entire, uh, the, the entire term like we did last year. Uh, we have a new snow policy coming up, um, soon. It's also going to be very much like our COVID emergency policy where we're no longer going to be adding days back in June. We're all capable of having school at home on our computers. And so if we have an extended blizzard, then, um, we, we can conduct school, assuming we still have electricity. So that's a bit of a change and, um, it, it gives kind of a new meaning to snow days, sadly, none of which we've had this year. So, um, that's it for my two reports. I would like to, um, to say regarding the retreat or goal-setting session coming up next, um, oh, three weeks from now, Brian had indicated that we'd be meeting in person. I don't remember us having that discussion. Um, I'm concerned about meeting with, um, counselors who remain unvaccinated and bringing our staff into that environment, bringing the hired consultant into that environment. While theoretically, we can wear masks, we certainly cannot have lunch and keep our masks on at the same time. Um, and so I would request that, um, we meet either vaccinated or, um, people who are not vaccinated meet, uh, with us virtually. And that's the conclusion of my report tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Banks. Counselor Spim.
Yes, I know we're part of my liaison, um, appointments, but I would like to give a big thanks to Green Play for doing the meeting last night, the update on the Parks Master Plan. They are still taking input, it sounds like. And, uh, Scott, do I understand correctly that that should be available on YouTube? I didn't look before the meeting. If people wanted to go back and get the update on the data collection, is it already up there, do you know?
Yep, it's on our city YouTube.
Right. Yeah, so, awesome.
On our, our city website, I'm sorry, Counselor Spim, excuse me, um, on our city website is also posted the slideshow that was presented last night. I think it's already up on the website.
Yeah, lots of interesting data and then it sounded like maybe we'd get some recommendations in March or April, uh, which is not as quickly as I would love them, but I understand nothing ever moves as fast as we want it to. So, um, so that was great and I really appreciate, um, them having that meeting. I appreciate all the city staff that attended it as well and I know that most of us were there for that, so excellent. Oh, and I, I will, uh, say that I agree with Counselor Banks. I, I would not like to be, um, in a room unmasked eating, uh, with people who may not be vaccinated. So I'm, I'm comfortable attending in person if masks are worn and worn appropriately. I'm not comfortable, um, eating in an environment where masks would be off. So however, whatever that looks like, um, you know, we can talk about that more, but he's not the only one that has concerns, I guess, is my point.
Thank you, Counselor Spim. Counselor Parker.
Nothing this week, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Bajoran's already spoken. Everybody shifted. I think we got everybody though. My screen looks totally different than it did two minutes ago. Everybody shifted. Okay, if I missed anybody, holler. I think I got you all though. Okay, moving on then to city administrator business and staff reports. Scott?
Thank you. Just two items. One is, um, the bi-monthly reports from the, uh, departments in the city are in your packet and, um, chock full of information. Should you have any questions, please do let me know. And then, um, the second and last item is, uh, the gazebo, uh, a new gazebo at Maple Street Park that is part of the pickleball court project. It's adjacent to the pickleball court, um, has now been installed. And so again, I, I've mentioned before, we're, um, we're waiting for, uh, the appropriate weather to finish the surfacing on those pickleball courts. So, you know, I think, um, this spring they'll, they'll be open and ready for use, but that, that new gazebo has been put in. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, okay, is there any other citizen input? Melissa?
Or Maya? You've approved the Consent Agenda Adopted Resolution Number thirteen sixty-one and have passed Ordinance Number fifteen sixty-seven to a second reading on February second, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. That was action review. We have no further citizen input? I'm going to take that as a no. Okay, I will, um, take a motion to move into executive session. I have called the mayor. He's going to try to join us.
So moved. I'm moving to executive session pursuant, uh, wait, which one is it? Oh, do we have the, there it is. Pursuant ORS one nine two, uh, dot six six zero, parent two, parent I, performance evaluation of a public officer.
Now, second.
Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Spoon and seconded by Counselor Farwick to go into executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two dot six six zero, parent two, parent I, the, uh, evaluation of a, uh, executive officer. All those in favor? And I need to read this. The city council will enter into the executive session for the purpose of conduct, conduct performance evaluation of a public officer. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one nine two dot six six zero, parent two, parent I, which allows the agency to meet in executive session to discuss this topic. Only representatives of the news media and designative staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. This, the council is meeting virtually in executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision has maybe made in executive session. At the end of the session, there will be no further business. So council, um, we're going to move over to the other link, Canby. We will be moving over to the executive session link and we will resume the meeting at the end of the executive session. So for now, we are on pause. Oh, wait, I see Joe. Do you have something to say, Joe?
Yeah, if you guys wanted to take action after this session, um, which I think is being sought, perhaps we gave you the wrong script. At the end of the session, because, uh, you can't actually make a decision in exec session, you can come back and officially reopen the meeting and make that decision. And I think that's what's going to be asked of you.
And that's kind of what I was trying to do. As I was reading that, I realized that, so I said at the end of the session, there will be no further business, but then I said, oh, but wait, we'll probably come back and resume this meeting on this link after our executive session.
Okay, thank you very much because I think that is what we intended. Sorry if we gave you the wrong script.
That's quite all right. I hope I covered it. Okay, we'll see you all on the other link.
At which time, uh?
What, Chris?
How about like nine fifteen?
We can't give a time certain because we don't know.
It's nine eleven now. I meant, how about we start the executive session?
Oh, you need a break?
After we've had time to stretch our legs.
Okay, um, that, that's doable. Nine fifteen, we will resume on the other link for executive session.
Right, thank you.
Good evening, Kami. We are back out of executive session into our regular city council meeting to approve an amendment to the employment contract of our city administrator, M. Scott Archer. And I believe, Melissa, you are going to bring that up.
Yes, I can bring that up. Are you able to see that?
Yes, Melissa, we are. My only question was, in the second paragraph, third, back half of the second line, it says, "per year," and then "effective retroactive to November 9th of 2020." We're not going back all the way back to the beginning of his contract, correct? It's just the last year?
It'll be 2021.
Thank you. And I don't have in front of my notes with me what the, let's see, what your, Scott, what the base salary is currently.
We can add that in there, or if you give me a couple of minutes, I could pull up that information.
Could we say instead, increasing the amount and then specify the percent and dodge the dollar amount?
I know, I'd have to ask our city attorney about that.
You can just say, yeah, the amount of the current base salary.
It just have the percentage in there, though.
It does.
It does have it in there.
It only said 2%, I thought we agreed on more.
Yeah, because it separates the deferred comp and the base salary.
I see it, I see it, thank you.
Any other wordsmithing, or?
No, that looks good. I was actually looking for a number. I didn't expect the number to be spelled out in words, honestly. That's why I didn't catch it right away. No, it looks good.
The only thing I would say is where you remove that line with the dollar amount, "current base salary effective retroactive," I would take out the word "effective."
There we go. Yeah, that looks better. I'm good. I'm assuming paragraph is the only thing we're changing.
Yeah, seems to be the case.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Mayor, are we ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion whenever you all are.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the employment contract for the city administrator, section five.
As presented.
As presented.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Councilor Bangs and seconded by Council President Hensley to approve the amendment to the employment contract of our city administrator, section five of the current employment agreement as presented. Any further discussion or comment?
I'll just add that for those watching, we had private meetings where we reviewed performance and went over all, you know, how we came to this number. So that all happens in private. We're not just randomly picking a number out of the air.
Counselor's phone for that, yes. That's, yeah, we, every, you know, we do an annual evaluation of our city manager, and from there it becomes a conversation about what is a fair compensation package increase based on the year's performance, and that's what this is stemming from. So yes, thank you, Councilor, for highlighting that explanation. Thank you. If there's nothing further, all those in favor of approving the amendment to the employment contract as presented?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Not seeing any opposition, we will say that this is passed 6-0, so that contract has been amended. Thank you, Scott, for a great year, and now come bigger and better expectations, I'm sure, from all of us. Melissa, thank you for adapting on the fly with this here the last 48 hours. I appreciate that as well. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that passes 6-0. Kami, thank you for tuning in once again. Have a great night, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you, everyone.
Night.